Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council held this Monday, May 1st, 2023. We are in council chambers and we're also being livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, May 15th, 2023. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel and Ms. Warden?
Here.
And Mr. Ansel had notified me he was away on vacation this week. We do have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I would ask you to join, stand and join city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17, 2023 meeting. Motion by Ms. Warden to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Meeting minutes of April 17, 2023 have been approved. Welcome, Mayor, and we look forward to what you have to impart upon us this evening.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and council members. Nice to have everyone here tonight. I'd like to start out by saying the Wayne Economic Development Council, or WEDC as we know it, held its annual meeting on Thursday, April 20th. Lydia Mahalik, the Director of Ohio Department of Development, was the speaker at the event. She presented an official recognition that I'll read to you here tonight. We don't get these very often, so I thought I'm going to take the time to celebrate them a little bit. It says, "From the State of Ohio, Mike DeWine and John Houston, Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Ohio, do hereby officially recognize Worcester, Ohio upon being recognized as a top 100 microopolitan community in the U.S. for the new and expanding facilities. On behalf of the State of Ohio, we congratulate Worcester, Ohio, as they are named a top 100 microopolitan community in the United States for the economic development by Site Selection Magazine. Your commitment and dedication to making a positive difference have made your community and Ohio a better place to live, work, and raise a family. We commend you upon receiving the tremendous recognition and extend our best wishes for continued success." Mike DeWine and John Houston. So that's the first one of those that we've gotten since I've been in this office. So a nice honor. Also, on April 20th, the Wayne County Children's Services Board held their annual luncheon for Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have many organizations that work together to help prevent child abuse in our area. They presented awards and had good speakers at that event. Our city development team met with the Wayne County Commissioners to talk about local development and Worcester's comprehensive plan. It was a helpful and productive meeting. The GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, presented a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to our city's finance department. This is the 22nd consecutive year of winning this award. Andre was here and starting in 2003, so he really been here for the majority of those presentations. So congratulations, Andre and your finance team. Assistant Police Chief Scott Rotolo, on April 27th, was awarded the Worcester Boys and Girls Club Founder's Award for his dedication to the club and his support of the organization over the past year. Assistant Chief Rotolo started with our Worcester Police Division in December of 2000, so about 23 years ago, 22 and a half, I guess. Congratulations, Scott, for this nice recognition. And I want to finish by saying thank you to all of you who are running for a public office this spring. It's not an easy thing to put the effort and expense into running for election and open yourself up to any comments, positive or negative, from the public. So thank you for taking on this challenge for the good of our community and the right to elect our leaders. And that's everything I have for you tonight. Thank you, President Biden-Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no petitions this evening and no one signed up to speak. Getting to item five, we do have a committee report. There was a finance committee earlier this evening. Mr. Sanders, would you like to give us a brief detail as to what transpired?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Finance Committee discussed bed tax allocation and economic development funding through bed tax allocation. After much discussion, we have asked our law director to put together some legislation related to that topic, which he will do, and we will probably have another Finance Committee meeting here in some future point in time to discuss that legislation and work through the details of what we'd like to proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we do have a public hearing. It will be chaired by Mr. Reynolds and it deals with planning and zoning code amendments. Mr. Reynolds, I turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We have a public hearing on a proposed amendment to ordinance Chapter 1107.05 involving regulation of mobile home park districts. I think the council already knows this, but for everyone else, I've got limited voice left tonight. We're going to see how far it'll take me, so I will try to do this in as few words as possible. And I know before Mr. Myers shouts up, "Why isn't it like this every week?" But, you know, I'll be back in full strength in two weeks.
I feel well to make it.
All right. I feel fine, I just don't have much voice. So with that being said, let's open up the public hearing on this. Is there someone here from the administration prepared to speak in favor of the proposed Mr. Marion and anyone else that's going to speak tonight at the public hearing, we ask you identify yourself, give your name and affirm to tell the truth.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Members of Council, thank you. Thank you for the time this evening. What you have before you is an amendment to the section of the code regulating manufactured home parks. If you recall, back in January of this year, an amendment was adopted that allows for the expansion of manufactured home parks within the R5 zoning district. That power was removed from the zoning code back in 2018, and at that time, also the standards for any new development concerning manufactured homes was also removed. What you have before you is the language that was in the code pre-2018, before the removal of the ability to expand manufactured home parks, that coincide with orderly development for future expansions within the existing R5 zoning district. All of the residential districts within our code require some sort of development standards in terms of open space requirements, recreational activities, the traffic flow, design of patterns for roadways, walkways, and intermodal connections between neighborhoods within the development. And these standards are, as I stated, what were in the code prior to the 2018 amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Just to add, Planning Commission did review these at the April, I believe it was April 4th meeting, and voted six to zero to recommend adoption of the standards be inserted within the zoning ordinance.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I assume, Mr. Marion, that this was something you also looked up, but just doing due diligence here. Were the former zoning codes that we had in place for the R5, I assume those are all still the same that you put in here. Have they changed at the state level? Are any requirements changed?
No, actually, I did look at two or three other zoning codes to compare what their standards are compared to what we had back in 2018, and a lot of them were pretty similar.
Okay.
Differences in sidewalk requirements, location, but wanting to be consistent with the language that was reinserted in the January amendment, we were using the same 2018 language.
Okay.
I do have, it's really a trivial question, but it's going to bug me if I don't ask it anyways. In looking through this, I see that the sidewalk widths are only three feet, and isn't our standard, isn't the standard four foot within the normal development of the city?
Yeah, I, three foot, this is along private roadways, these aren't public roadways, and they're only required on one side of the street.
And then, and then that answers that. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
You are correct. Any sixty-foot wide right-of-way or less requires a four-foot sidewalk.
No, but that answers the question. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, Mr. Marion?
Thank you very much.
I just had a point of clarification, I think maybe to answer Jen's question. So the state, and I would add federal requirements, I think you were talking about, that we were talking about property maintenance code issues, not zoning. So that's another piece of legislation.
Oh, yeah. No, I actually was talking about zoning. I didn't know if there were, if there were any requirements at the state or higher level for that. Okay. Yeah, I know the maintenance thing is a whole different ball of wax, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marion. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Anyone here to speak against it? Anyone from council have anything to add? Not, we'll consider this public hearing concluded. Thank you.
All right. We have officially had the public hearing on ordinance number 2023-17. There is no unfinished business. We'll move right into new business. The first one is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-17. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance amending Chapter 1107.05, district-specific purpose statements and regulations.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Does the administration have anything they want to add on top of what was just presented at the public hearing? I think the public hearing gave a pretty good synopsis of what purposes this legislation is, not just because of my limited ability tonight, but also, I don't think, there's no urgency to this legislation, so I'm going to propose leaving this on first reading.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2023-17 as having its first reading. Then we'll turn our attention to ordinance number 2023-18. Again, it will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It too is slated for three readings. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-18, an ordinance amending Chapter 1351.04, amendments of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm going to turn this over to the administration, I think, to someone here prepared to address this and... Mr. Monet?
Yes. What we're proposing to do is change the scope of the property maintenance code to allow it to apply to manufactured housing, as we discussed back in January when we had the discussion. Now, obviously, we recognize that the federal government and the state government has some preemption over what we can do locally. However, there are parts of that code that we feel we could apply, and so it would help us, as I think was the intent, in avoiding another Larwell disaster. So we have some things in there, some tools that we can use, so by changing the scope, it gives us that ability to do that. There are any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Monet. I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you for picking up on this, and it makes perfect sense, and I think the administration knew very clearly from council that we wanted to be able to enforce our codes in conjunction with this change in the zoning. So you were on it right away, took care of this, and I personally say thank you.
Well, if anyone could find something that could be done, Mr. Monet, when it comes to building standards, over the years, I've come to know him as a savant, so it doesn't surprise me, it didn't take him very long to figure that out. So thank you, Mr. Monet.
And, Mr. President, much like the previous ordinance, I want to make sure the public and the council has a chance to digest this, and so I propose leaving this on first reading tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We'll consider ordinance number 2023-18 as having its first reading. That'll bring us to resolution number 2023-31. It'll be presented by Ms. Knappich. This one is budgeted, so will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Paulo, once again, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-31, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase playground equipment for Clear Creek Park and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. I get to deal with the most positive thing on the agenda tonight, I think.
Absolutely.
And that is providing playground equipment to Clear Creek Park. This will provide welcoming play area for everyone. It will meet all ADA requirements so that it will be accessible to most everyone. It's, this'll be something that will attract families to the park to use the playground, to rent the pavilion, just to hang out at the park. It just sounds like a really, really wonderful thing to do, to add this playground to the park for our families and our kids. The estimated cost is $73,500. Again, this is a budgeted item. I am very pleased and honored and grateful to say that $45,000 of that is from a private donation, and we are so fortunate to have those kinds of things in our community. We are very, very, very fortunate. So this is a resolution, it's budgeted, and unless there are any questions or conversation on this, I'd like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I see a gentleman nodding his head back there. Would you like to talk?
Yes, please do.
Please.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Council members, this is Joe Avila. He is in our Parks Department now and helping our city move forward. So if you haven't had a chance to meet him yet, he joined us, I think, four months ago or something?
Close about eight months, but who's counting? Not a problem at all. But yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, President, and board members. But yes, I was nodding my head because parks excite me. It really does kind of, you know, it provides just an element of excitement for our kids, learning experience and everything. So this proposal for a development over Clear Creek is phenomenal. So if we can get approval on that, that would be great.
Can you just, for the public, tell us to the public what kind of playground equipment will be there?
So it would be a structure developed by Pinchura. So it's more based off of the landscape that's there already, so it's like kind of a forestry theme. You're going to have your slides, you're going to have your swings and walk, like kind of like a walk pattern, I guess you can say. I don't, left all my paperwork over there, but for the most part. It's a small development, but at the same time, I think it's going to provide quite a bit of excitement for the kids that, you know, kind of are in that area.
Excellent. Thank you.
We were provided some renderings previously. I'm not sure if those are on the city's website or anything, but they, maybe they could be.
Oh, they could be.
They just pop them up there, so start to build some excitement.
Yep.
Well, you need to get out more and get to council meetings so we know who you are, Joe.
Well, if we talk about parks a little bit more, I'll be more than happy to join.
All right. Put parks on every agenda.
I was just telling, you know, parks are fun. I love parks, but yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing else. Thank you.
If I could a little bit rain on the fun parks parade here for just a moment, so I know. I've gotten a few messages from constituents recently about some problems in the parks, and so if I would just maybe encourage Mr. Avila and your team to keep an eye on that, the safety, you know, finding drug paraphernalia. I know it's hard, and you have to stay on top of it all the time, but between that and the restrooms and, you know, maybe some of the other problems that go on out there, just, because, yeah, we want to really have our community enjoy those, the parks and all the work that you put into it, and so unfortunately, that's the downside of it we have to keep up with, but thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it is a fun thing, and I remind people that Eric Byrne, who did transactional analysis, said that child is the most important part of the personality. So I think parks and playground equipment embodies that, and those that go to parks with their children, I think, have a little bit of their inner child come out, too, when they see playground equipment.
I know I do.
Yeah, me too.
Nothing further.
All right. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-31 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2023-32. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, is slated for three readings.
And, Mr. Biden-Dyke, if I may interrupt, at this point, I will have to recuse myself from that legislation due to potential conflict with one of the recipients of an existing CRA agreement is my employer. And so at this point, I had discussed this with Mr. Myers, and he is willing to take over for me this evening related to this legislation.
And you had told me that earlier today, so, but you would have had to explain yourself anyway, so...
Exactly.
Might as well have handed it off to Mr. Myers in the aplomb that you did. So anyhow, it is slated for three readings. Mr. Myers has been called in from the bullpen to pinch, hit, or pitch for Mr. Sanders, but I am still required to look to Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2023-32, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing projects.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, and it's a really difficult challenge to have him hand it off because all I'm going to do is say, "Mr. Millay, would you like to tell us about the legislation?"
Excuse me, I need to recuse myself as well. I overlooked that. So do you have enough for a quorum?
Well, I think there's enough on here. They probably will keep it till on first reading.
Well, I'll have to recuse, recuse.
Because I don't think, I don't think we have enough left.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Myers. We are just presenting the recommendations of our annual Tax Incentive Review Council, having submitted our report to the State of Ohio by the 30th of March. We met earlier this past month to review those reports that our partner firms had provided. Just a couple items to highlight. I am sure that we're pretty familiar with how these programs have evolved over the years, but we've had 22 active projects and over 40 different projects over the 20-year span of this program that have been enabled. These are, again, projects that are, that could not have happened otherwise with either remediating blight or downtown reinvestment or basic sector job creation. And this past year, notably, we reached over $1 million of new property tax creation for not only ourselves but our partners. So that affects every homeowner in our community by relieving some of the tax burden that they would have otherwise paid. It materially results in a lower tax bill for each homeowner and each business by having these projects that would not have happened otherwise, and to the tune of $1 million this past year. I'll also note that, I have to correct myself, it's 51 unique projects over the 20-year span. We had roughly this, this past year, 306 new jobs attributed as being created and 3184 existing jobs collectively, $200 million of payroll either created or protected through the results of these programs. Most of our firms were bounding back as employment rolls grew, and so we had a very positive review this past year. That's why, as you read this, these are exclusively continue or in compliance. That said, I'm happy to help answer any questions. We previously shared the detailed report along with the meeting minutes. There's no rush on this, but once recommendations are either accepted or if any should be modified, we'll share these with our county counterparts who also rely on our recommendations for a couple of our projects. But stellar performance with our business partners who have made these projects possible, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Does anyone in council have any questions for Mr. Millay?
Well, Mr. Millay, tell us where we stand in terms of using this. We are one of the top communities in the state that uses these.
So with the Community Reinvestment Area Program, I believe at last count, although we haven't checked just recently, that we were third in the state of Ohio for number of projects. Now, that's not because that we're making these freely available, they have been very strategic, but the one unique thing about Worcester that we have done is we've taken this program that a lot of cities will reserve for multimillion-dollar projects, and we've had it opened up to small business owners. So projects that might only be $150,000, which, you know, to me, that's a lot of money, and to a lot of people it is, they've been welcomed to this program as well. And that's why we have a lot of our buildings in downtown, these smaller spaces that are more challenging to work with, go through this process and have that ability to be able to take a risk on that reinvestment. So it's been a program that's been very helpful for our downtown revitalization in particular.
I'm glad you said that because I didn't want to have to cross-examine you and say, "Isn't it fair to say we wouldn't have the downtown we have now without this?"
This is true.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir.
Jonathan, one clarification, then one question. You talked about a million, we're up over the million-dollar mark. That's not, that's an annual figure, not a cumulative figure, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. So annually, this year, $1 million plus came into our communities, the collective, county, city, schools, community coffers, and that $1 million displaces what everybody else would have had to pay, because when we're talking about property tax and schools and things like that, most of these services are what's called outside millage, and it's a process by where we're all pulling our resources together. So that's why your tax bill changes every single year, and part of the reason why it has been changing and going down a little bit is because of the investments our companies have made in our community through this program, which allowed them to invest here instead of going to Michigan, or in the case of our small downtown businesses deciding not to be able to afford to do the project. Keeping in mind that when individuals invest in the real estate piece of it, especially the small business owners, 20% of their operating costs of owning that structure is going to be going to property tax. So that's what that program's temporarily relieving, but in the long run, this year and... and going forward evermore, we'll have $1 million, and that's roughly a five, it accounts for 5% of our total millage, which, sorry to get into the weeds, I, I get excited about this kind of stuff, but imagine if everybody in, in the county had to suddenly take a 5% property, or a 5% budget cut. That's, that's what these programs together, single-handedly prevented. So, they've, they boosted things up by 5% without having to put that on the backs of homeowners or existing business.
And, so I do have one more question, and again, knowing how much you do like going into the weeds, I always get nervous, like, you know, do I open that can of worms, but... So, my apologies in advance. But, that property tax dollar, that $1 million of additional tax revenue, I think I'm right in the schools get about 70% of that tax dollar?
Approximately, yes.
And the rest goes to county library, township trustees. We're actually, the, the city revenue fund is actually a pretty small recipient of that, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, for, for the commercial piece of it, we're between 4% and 5%, depending again on, on the year, because those rates will, will shift. Residential, just a little bit more. But, but yes, the city of Worcester has 4.2 mils throughout most of the jurisdiction. Some other areas, it, it varies, it depends on annexation, but on average, within the city of Worcester, though, roughly 60 mils is what a homeowner will experience, and a homeowner, a, a business owner will pay a premium, because they don't get the rollback credit. So, they, they will pay, on average, about 74 mils, so we're, we're looking upwards of about 15, 20% more than what a homeowner would pay. However, homeowner has a higher per value per square foot.
And I only wanted to ask that question because I wanted to illustrate why the schools are generally supportive of our abatement efforts when it's there, because they recognize in the long haul, they make out on that. It generates revenue for the schools.
Yeah, and, and they've been great partners. They have been involved in every decision that, that we've made. All of these go through Worcester Growth. We also prepare a pro forma and a fiscal analysis for every single agreement, so that there's clear understanding of what forgone revenues would be versus the value of these exemptions and what they can ultimately, when we get to this point, what they can produce in the long run to help solidify and strengthen our economy. And then there are also the job commitments that come along with that, that provide all of us the, the opportunity for economic mobility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knappick.
Thank you. I noticed we did have a few, not very many, but a few people who missed their targets and on these, these programs. Just wanted to make sure, there isn't anybody who stands out as, most of the time, there's a very good explanation for why they missed targets. It could be that they can't get the equipment in, they can't get the parts, that kind of thing. Do you see any red flags in these reports?
No. So, when we conduct this, we do a red light, green light, yellow light. So, if you, if you miss your, your target, that, you know, say if you were supposed to have 1,000 jobs and you had 999, you'll show up as a missed target, even though your payroll may be exceeding what you had committed, which is also a benefit to citizens overall. That said, when we get to a point where somebody misses 25% or more of their targets for a period of three years, at that point, the Tax Incentive Review Council is required to render a recommendation onto you to either modify or to terminate the agreement. Usually, again, everything we've worked with has been operated with, I'm happy to say, good, good faith, and we have always been able to find solutions to those situations. Again, nothing on, on this year's report, but that said, it is something that we track, we take very seriously, we do follow up. There, you know, it, it is an agreement between the community and private sector, and so I, I'm happy to say that everyone has played very well, and together, I, I think we've all made great things happen.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And one, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
On, on an average piece of vacant land, what, what would you say is an average of what it was generating and?
Well, for, for the city of Worcester, a negative, or a vacant piece of land actually costs us money. It's, we, we calculated this recently. It was not, not a tremendous amount, but it, it materially costs money to have vacant property. Now, if you're the county, there's maybe some residual, you can get possibly $200 or $300 a year if we're thinking like a vacant city lot. If you're a, a large tract of farmland, if you imagine even a quarter square mile may only generate, I, I could be wrong here, but it may only generate between $5,000 and $6,000. Imagine, you know, just, just a couple of homes will easily do that within a, you know, less than an acre.
And some of our industrial projects, it'd be fair to say, in, in some instances, what was literally bringing in maybe hundreds or maybe a few thousand could be bringing in 20, 30, 40 times more than what, even with the abatement, than what that piece of vacant property was bringing.
Correct. Yeah, so even with these exemptions in place, there, there's an immediate return on investment. I'll, I'll just highlight the Ray and Associates and Graham Holdings Weaver Custom Homes project. At one time, we had the Horne Nursing Home in place, became abandoned and fallen into disrepair after a flood. That property was producing in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $60,000 a year, and that was a really important benefit for the community, particularly our schools. And when that property was no longer able to be used for that purpose, that property value falls precipitously, and now we have a tax exemption in place on that property, which enabled the construction of a beautiful new building by Ray and Associates. They've made a wonderful investment in our community. Weaver Custom Homes does what they always do with some incredible construction. That property today, I'm happy to report, is basically, while it's under exemption, recovered, for the most part, that significant tax loss that would have otherwise been foisted on to, you know, again, other businesses and other homeowners to pay. So, it's, it's been a fantastic opportunity, not just on the industrial, but our downtown rehab and, and complete redevelopment as well. And I, I, when I have the opportunity to speak with other communities, I do try to impress upon them how critical these tools are for employment and being able to help compete against other states and bring some of that activity locally, but then also too to, to rebuild our, our community, which, which we really needed.
And you do a fantastic job every year with putting the report together and presenting it to the Turk Tax Incentive Review Committee, and then subsequently presenting it to council.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort. Everybody here's made these things possible, so I'm, it's just fun to get to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments, I believe we're gonna leave this on first reading. Give everyone some time to, to look over some of the fairly lengthy report, which I did go through briefly, but I, I would like to spend some more time going through in detail.
I don't think we could suspend the rules anyways with four of us.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, so let's just leave it on first reading. Well, we're, we're never gonna be able to suspend the rule on this legislative. Well, Hansel, he might be able to vote when he comes back.
Yeah, but not tonight.
Not tonight. Yeah, but we're gonna, we're gonna let it on first reading anyway.
Yeah, okay. We'll consider resolution number 2023-32 as having its first reading, and we'll bring, that will bring us to our final piece of legislation, resolution number 2023-33. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds, slated for three readings, but before I get to you again, Mr. Reynolds, Ms. DiPaolo, would you read this last piece of legislation?
Resolution number 2023-33. A resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Yeah, and I should note that Ms. Warden and Mr. Sanders are back with us on council, so. I hope you have what's left of your voice, seeing that you grilled Mr. Millay mercilessly, so, but hopefully it'll bring us home now.
We're getting towards the end of the meeting, so I'm getting kind of reckless as far as what I'm willing to say and do, so I'm even gonna try to tackle this on my own.
Okay.
So, this is a usual and customary piece of legislation. When we bring in additional property through annexation, it results in a change in the boundaries of the municipality, and when that happens, we have to conform our boundary, and this is a petition asking the Board of County Commissioners to do so, to reflect the change in the boundary resulting from the most recent annexation of 32.24 acres. So, I don't know if there's anything the administration wants to add. John, are you all keyed up for that?
Sorry, no, I think you covered all of it, other than just to say that we'll have to ask to have this on first reading, is we have to give statutory notices out to our township partners, who are, of course, anticipating this, this type of agreement, and we would be looking for a formal consideration on the matter on June 5.
Yeah, and I know we will make the auditor and the Board of Elections happy doing this, otherwise, we have a stub piece part in the city and still part kind of controlled by township, so it, it's the best thing, best practices to do. So, we'll consider resolution number 2023-33 as having its first reading. That brings us to our miscellaneous portion, and no one signed up to speak for the public, so we'll just start out with now, council. Ms. Knappick, we'll give you the first word.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to congratulate the city on its commendation proclamation from the governor and the lieutenant governor. That's very, very impressive. Congratulations for, for bringing us the attention of the state in such a positive way. I also like to congratulate the finance department for keeping doing what they keep doing, and that's winning awards and doing a great job in the finance department. Congratulate Assistant Chief Rotolo on his Founder's Award for Boys and Girls Club, and I'd like to thank Mr. Marin, who spoke at the public meeting, and Mr. Millay, who so kindly put, gave us all that information today. And other than that, I just want to remind people that tomorrow is May 2nd. If you're a Democrat, if you're a Republican, if you're an independent, go out and vote. That's all.
All right, Mr. Reynolds?
I'd just say thank you for my fellow council people for putting up with me tonight, and for the administration for helping me out in presentations, otherwise, nothing further.
Ms. Warden?
I'd just like to, I guess, welcome Mr. Avila to the, the city. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight, and we look forward to seeing your face out there more frequently, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Honored to work with you, it's a great business.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
I have nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. I wanted to just want to say, we have such a great community, that I got to attend in the last couple of weeks, the, the Wayne Economic Development Council's annual breakfast, which was a really fun thing to learn more about what they've been doing and to hear from those folks, followed by the Wayne County Child Abuse Prevention Luncheon. I think those were the same day. And then the United Way Annual Meeting, which was a nice, was a luncheon, and then the Boys and Girls Club Annual Dinner. Lot of great speakers, a lot of excitement of all these things going on in our community. The Goodwill Breakfast is actually this Thursday, so looking forward to that as well. But I have to say, Assistant Chief Rotolo gave one of the best speeches I've probably heard in, in my, my many years of going to these kinds of functions for the last 20-plus years. He did an excellent job. I was proud to, to know him personally, but also was proud of him for, on behalf of the city and the Worcester Police Department. He, he was grateful for the award, and he gave a, a very nice presentation, and I think all of us could be proud of what he did there, so, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin, we'll give you the last word.
I would just also echo what Jen and, I think Barb said, please get out and vote. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, did you, I see you have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.